Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Carson.
Here.
Dr. Pike?
Here.
Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mr. Polatowski? Mrs. Raymond?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Mrs. Williams?
Here. I would just like it to be noted on the record that Mrs. Smith and Mr. Polatowski did notify me they would not be present this evening. We were also in executive session for some personnel matters, legal matters, and tax, real estate issues.
Citizens' comments?
Jan Kiefer. Jan Kiefer, 628 Homestead Avenue, Dead Man's Curve, section of the township. I'd like to speak on this. Since you didn't ask, I'd like to speak on the subject of the health plan that's on the agenda. Guess you have to have that at this point in the procedure. I'd like to know about the live stream, how many numbers of people were watching, and how many buttons need pushed to keep that program going. That was a wonderful outreach program. And I was looking at the vaccine policy on your webpage, and there's some really archaic language in there. It's sexist, it's ageist, it's very revealing of what the National Education Teachers Union would have put out at that era. So it's really a classic page to go and look at that. It exposes the self-interest at the expense of the students in health and life and death. We have a lot of public comment period issues that are screwing on. I've unraveled three or four in the last couple of years. I have three or four counts now that I'm holding, and they're still counting. So they're still going on. So when you're looking at the vaccination policy, please look at that. When you're talking about the health plan, you're talking about the dead zones in the ventilation area where the air isn't getting pulled out and good stuff isn't getting pushed in, right? What about the EMF dead zones? Where are they in the school so my child and my friends can know? I don't want my kids sitting there. I don't want my kids sitting in the dead zone of the ventilation zone. So where is the hot zone? That's the word I'm looking for. Where's the hot zone? Put it on the map, put it on the floor plan, send it out to the teachers and say, "Little Johnny, there's your seat for today." But you're years away from EMF like we are a lot of things here. You can give me 30 seconds warning. And then we need to maximize the outdoors. With your health plan, the transmission level is so low outdoors compared to indoors. You've done nothing in that regard. Everything should be outdoors now inverted. Play football indoor. Do you get the idea? So directly to your health plan, and I don't want to be interrupted on this, I might take a few seconds longer. You're backing the group. Mr. Masha was often the spokesman for them. But they created the virus. I was saying that before. You were wearing masks, and it was at this microphone. So these same people that you're backing, you're up against with who got your two little wall, they're preventing treatments that are used all around the world that are knocking this virus out like you wouldn't believe. Maybe you know that. So maybe you're backing them and knowing what kind of people you're backing. I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt. They've instilled an incredible amount of fear in you, which is evident from this false testing, and you certainly are that. And here's who you're rubber stamping, ladies and gentlemen, as I stand before you, in your select exclusive committee that you formed and held behind closed doors. I'm sure there's a recording of it, right? We can all see who's in that recording as I get the deadpan stares into the outer rows of the 10-person audience. You've been wrong by a measurable extent. You have to tell the public where you've been wrong, or we're going to assume you don't know where you've been wrong. Pregnant pause. Finally, you desocialized our children for a year and a half, and we're coming full speed into this again. Let's talk about the desocialization. That is on your watch. You could have had academic things, and you could have socialized those children outdoors throughout this whole process through simple programs like lunch in the park. It could have been done, and it would have been a beautiful thing, but it would not happen here. And don't say you weren't told it was a good idea a long time ago, and don't do it again. It's not going to happen again on my watch. Thank you. No, no thank you.
Is there any other citizen comment?
No.
General Fund Board summary report.
Board is asked to consider the approval of the June 2021 General Fund Board summary.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Sorry, was there a stockup?
Yes, it was Mrs. Smith.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven yes, two absent. Fund accounting check summary listing.
Board is asked to consider the approval of the June 2021 Fund Accounting Check Summary listing.
Need a motion?
To move.
That's Mr. Carson and Mrs. Rhodes. Discussion? Roll call. Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven yes, two absent. Monthly Board Treasurers Report.
Board is asked to consider the approval of the May 2021 Treasurer's Report.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Raymond and Mrs. Smith. Discussion?
Ms. Michelle, am I correct in saying that we have a total fund balance now of $5,184,784? Is that right?
The beginning bank balance that you were looking at? The $5,873,267,80?
The Treasurer's Report. Are we looking at the Treasurer's Report?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, total fiduciary funds. We have $5,184,784. What all does that include?
That includes all of it. That includes the general fund, that includes the cafeteria fund, as well as the fiduciary funds. When you're looking at the amount that you're looking at, the $5,184,784.30, that is the total of all the funds.
So how much of that do you expect to be left over, then? Because this is from May 31st, so we close out at the end of June.
That is correct. We still have to continue to book our payables for the end of the year, as well as our anticipated revenues. So I've started working on, I've actually contacted Mark Turnley this last week, and I've already started working on part of the audit for this past year.
So we would have like a $4 million fund balance, then? Maybe?
Possibly. Like I said, when you look at what was on board docs for the General Board Summary Report, if you look at that at the very end, you will see year-to-date, and that is through June 30th. But like I said, there are additional revenues, as well as additional expenses that we have to book. Right now, what you're looking at at the very end, we've had expenses of total expenditures We had total revenues of $31,7,966.68, which obviously shows that you've expended more than you've taken in this past year. But like I said, that is kind of deceiving at this point because we still have expenses, as well as revenues, to book for last fiscal year.
Did you just say we spent more than we took in?
That is correct. If you look at your expended revenues, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the current budget, at the expended revenues, I'm sorry, I apologize, we actually did take in more. I looked at the wrong column. I totally apologize. The expended revenue, what we took in was, what we spent was $30,358,899.34, and then we have $30,413.334.38, which is excess that we took in of our expenses of $54,435.4.
So we are working at a deficit?
No, ma'am. If you're looking at...
Well, other than the $54,000, though.
The $54,000, right now, we've taken in excess of our expenditures.
Plus, we still have more to come in yet.
Correct. We still have more revenues to book, and we still have more expenses to book.
How much revenue do you expect? A lot?
Well, we would have the amount for Peasars, we would have the amount for Social Security Medicare from the state to book, as well as, it's too early to get the PDE report as far as the anticipated revenues of what we need to book. That normally doesn't come out until the end of July, early August.
We get all of our money by June 30th, though, don't we?
Correct, but we also book receivables.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah, so, yes, we have all our cash.
I know those can run as far as October. I mean, we've been told that many times, that they can even run as far as October.
Well, you should have your audited financials reported by the end of October, at the end of November at the very latest.
Right.
That's why I've started working with Mr. Turnley already.
Can you predict a surplus, then, for next year?
He's been here for...
I was going to say, no, not on...
For six days.
Not on day six, to be honest with you.
Are there any other questions? Discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven yes, two absent. Superintendent information?
Yes, the Southmoreland Middle School Summer School Program ended for students on July 1st. Fifty-three students were enrolled. Eighteen students participated solely on the grounds of filling learning gaps caused by COVID and the online learning. Thirty-five students participated due to grade retention. We are very happy to report that 31 students successfully attended and completed two classes, therefore are now being promoted, and four others are in the process of working towards that goal. The staff felt that the program was successful, and that they could work with students that needed the extra attention, and that connections made while working in smaller groups of students, not only aid student-teacher relationships, but assist with school climate. And I would personally like to thank those summer school staff in middle school that participated in that program. The Southmoreland Middle School will still be retaining 14 students, and hopefully we will make all efforts to assist those. The elementary launchpad program will begin next week. There are currently 76 students enrolled, K through 5. In K and 1, there are 46 students, and 2 through 5, there are 30 students. So that is going to be still skill development, so hopefully that is going to be a very successful program also. So I'm very pleased to report that our summer programming so far has been very well received and has been successful.
Thank you. Business manager report. I would like to, I apologize, I would like to welcome Pamela Mondau as our new business manager. We're excited to be working with you, as well as Amy Zundel, who is our new solicitor.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here at the Southmoreland School District. It is very close to home, it's close to my heart, and I hope to do the best that I can here for you. I have already started talking with Mark Turnley, who is our auditor. He has provided me with the ponchalist for this year's audit. I've already started reaching out to the individuals within the district to get the information needed to begin the audit. Once I do that and we have the audit successfully completed, then I also want to begin working on the budget sooner rather than later. And my goal is then to work on at least a three-year projection, because we need to look at refreshments, such things as refreshments, refresh of the computers. We need to look at our curriculum adoption cycles. We need to look at all those information, as well as any capital improvements that we might need to have for the district. So I think it will behoove us to continue forward with a projection plan after I get the initial budget built for next year, so that we can look and know where we're going as a district. And I think that will help you all make your decisions on an easier basis once you have that in your hands to look at.
Yeah.
Michelle, I had a question to the superintendent's information. Can I ask it? When these 78 students finish the launchpad, will that enable them to move on to another grade if they were in danger of being retained?
Right now, currently, I do not believe that any will retain if there are efforts right now, and I believe that's going to be explained here shortly, that parents can request retention. But, yes, we're solely focusing on those skills that the elementary school teachers have identified those students as being in need.
So that will enable some students who were having difficulties to move on to another grade if they were on the line, or something like that?
Yes, Dr. Pike.
That's the objective of the launchpad.
The intent is to get those students the skills that they might not be sufficiently adept at at this point in time.
It's not like it's credit recovery or anything, but it does give them an opportunity to perhaps learn something that will be able to help them in the next grade.
Yes, Dr. Pike.
Okay, thank you.
I thought that you did have some retaining.
There were.
And some opted for this program, and some opted not.
I got it.
I'm sorry, solicitor information?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. My name is Amy Zundel. Thank you, Board, for approving Weissberg-Hart Kramer as your new solicitor last month. I'm happy to be here at the table tonight, looking forward to working with all of you as you move forward, back to, hopefully, knock on wood, a more normal year of learning next year, and moving the district into the future. I know I have some longstanding shoes to fill with Mr. Potonic, having been your solicitor for many, many years. I've had a few communications with him already. We had a lengthy phone conversation last week, and have had multiple email correspondence and communication around transferring the solicitor work effectively and efficiently for the district. I do have a couple of legal updates for informational purposes. The first that I'll talk about is Act 66, which was referred to by Mr. Masha. That's the act that Governor Wolf signed on June 30th that permits parents and students over the age of 18 to repeat the school year that the child was enrolled in last school year because of the COVID, school closures and disruptions. Parents or the student, if they're over 18, have to elect that by July 15th. So there's a very short turnaround. The law was signed into existence finally, even though we knew it was most likely coming on June 30th, and the form that PDE has made available does have to be submitted by the close of business on July 15th. The law also permits students with disabilities who are eligible for special education programming to stay in school-age programming, where they would typically exit after they attain age 21. They can remain in for one additional year during the 21, 22 school year. The second law that is going to impact board operations in 60 days, it was signed into law also on June 30th. This is Act 65. It is an amendment to the law which requires and supports further transparency in board agendas and operations. It requires board agendas to be posted online at least 24 hours in advance of the board meeting, where you will take public action. Boards can still vote to add items onto the agenda by a majority vote when you're at your board meeting, which is typical to the walk-on items that many districts do have to add to their agenda. At the same time as adding something like that, there will have to be an announcement as to what it's for, what the reason for the walk-on item is. There is an exception for emergencies and de minimis actions. Posting of agendas, of course, does not apply to work sessions or executive sessions. But again, they gave you a little bit more time with Act 65 to put it in place. You have a period of 60 days, so it will go into effect in September of 2021. Thank you.
Question. On the Act 66, where it says you have to be done by Thursday, July 15th, is that district? Or is that state?
It's written into the law.
Into the law, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Scottsdale, Florida?
Board of School Directors of the Southmoreland School District is asked to approve a resolution establishing tax exemptions for improvements within certain designated areas within the borough of Scottsdale, Pennsylvania pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act.
Need a motion?
Go ahead. I'll make the motion.
Discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
No.
Pardon? Dr. Pike?
No.
Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six yes, one no, and two absent. That resolution, general obligation notes.
Do you believe we have a guest this evening? Mr. Flip Pastell? He's going to provide some additional information for us.
I'm with Denton, Moore &amp; Shaw. We are your bond counsel in connection with the upcoming new money borrowing and refundings. The resolutions we have for you tonight to consider, and it requires five favorable votes to pass these, are the Debt Act required authorizations for incurring the debt. And the plan prepared by the financial advisor is to go dual-track, to solicit bank loan bids, and if the bids look good enough, go with those. But if the financial advisor instead recommends that you can do better with the bond issue, you go with the bond issue. At this point, they're expecting that the bank loans would provide lower rates, lower interest costs, primarily because of lower upfront cost of issuance, and that's possible because of the fairly short term of the bond issues and the size, and because they fall in the category of bank-qualified debt, and therefore banks are willing to bid a lower interest rate. So the resolutions for you to consider tonight are the Debt Act authorizations, and they can contain all the legal approvals required by the school board for the issuance of the debt. I'm happy to answer any questions about this.
This is for a... We talked about what doing with the roof.
Yes.
The new money is to replace the roof on the elementary school, and the refundings, if successful, would permit you to do that without raising mileage. And without raising any additional, it wouldn't cost you any additional debt service compared to your existing debt service. But since that's not locked in stone at this point, I'll be going out for bid on one of them, assuming you adopt the resolutions, I'll put out the request for proposal tomorrow with bids due on one of the loans end of July, and on the other loan in mid-August. And if rates continue to be as good as they have been, then there would be savings. No one can protect the market at this point.
Are there any questions? Mr. Pastell?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To move.
Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Rhodes. Discussion?
So, sorry, I'm not, I'm not understanding. So what we are voting on tonight is just the resolution part of it, not necessarily like the bank loan, or... Am I understanding?
Right, yes. What you're voting on is the resolution this evening, and then once that happens, the PFM will put out two RFPs if you indeed approve this tonight, and they'll send that out starting tomorrow, depending upon what rates are most advantageous is the route that we're going to take.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
No.
Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six yes, one no, two absent. Additional track resurfacing information?
I included that on board docs just as informational purposes for the board, new information, so I wanted to provide it.
Plan between Southmoreland School District and Southmoreland School District Support Staff.
Board is asked to approve the plan between the Southmoreland School District...
Michelle, what happened to that track thing? Was it just, did you table it, or...
What happened to what?
The track resurfacing.
It was just information. Mr. Masha said, "We're not voting on anything." It was just further information for us.
Oh, I had some questions about that.
Okay, I mean, you can go ahead, but this was just another, I think we're still working with Echols on the track.
First of all, I don't hear anything that's being said, so forgive me. On this proposal, it says that the proposal does not include bonds or permits. So does that mean we have to pay extra for those things? Extra for bonds or permits? According to this proposal here.
So, Dr. Pike, we're not accepting this proposal or even voting on this.
No, but I have a question about it.
Well, I think Echols is going to be more involved in this, and this didn't come from Echols, this is from Co-Stars. It's just further information.
Okay, I don't know why I got it, then. Okay, Michelle, I get you. I didn't know I got it. Okay. I thought we were going to...
I was unsure, too, but that's, it's just for more information to go along with the other Co-Stars that we have. So, plan between Southmoreland School District and Southmoreland School District Support Staff.
Board is asked to approve the plan between the Southmoreland School District and the Southmoreland School District Support Staff.
I need a motion? Need a second? I think it was Mrs. Overear and Mr. Carson.
Right.
Discussion? Roll call. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Overear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven yes, two absent. Presley Ridge Addendum Number Four to the contractual agreement.
Board is asked to consider the approval of the addendum number four to the contractual agreement with Presley Ridge of Greensboro.
I need a motion?
Make the motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Are we using this now? Do we have anybody there?
We do. We do.
Any other discussion?
Can you explain to me what this is?
It's for outplace students that have specific needs that we can't address within our district.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
ARP Health and Safety Plan.
The board is asked to approve the attached ARP Health and Safety Plan.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
I read this plan about six times, and I'm just confused. It appears to me that what this plan does is fulfill the requirements if you want to get money. Is that right?
We're required to submit it for SRS.
So that's what this is. This is a document that was prepared to turn in to, I don't know who the gods are on high, in order to get money. When I read the Southmoreland plan, which is like a page and a half long, I had a number of questions, and I was wondering if you could help me to understand them. On the last page, five of six, I would like to know if you could tell me for, people call, I've had calls when people say, what is this plan? What's it going to have in it? And I can't answer it. Please describe for me what is contact tracing in detail? Who does what, when, where, and how? What do you mean by isolation? I'm assuming that applies to students. And quarantine? What are those parameters? Exactly how are these things done, and what do they mean for the student body and our families?
If there is a confirmed case of COVID, Dr. Pike, and let's just say, let's just start out with an easy one.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
If there's a positive case of COVID, and let's just say the student was riding the bus in the morning.
Okay.
We have to get the list of all students on that bus. We have to look at their proximity to the student that has been identified, and then we have to follow guidelines submitted to us by PDE and the state.
This is a question. This is a question. How do you know you have a positive case of COVID? Let's start with that. How would you know that Johnny sitting in third grade has a positive case of COVID?
When we have a phone call from a parent telling us that their child is there. That's the only way we know.
Yeah, we...
Okay, I'm glad to know that, because the concern that the parent had for me is, who is saying that this is a positive case of COVID?
The parent.
Okay, so Johnny has COVID. So now you do contact tracing. That means somebody picks up a phone or goes on a home visit. Tell me what happens with contact tracing.
That's what he was telling you. So it starts with a bus ride to the school.
So if I'm sitting next to, within a close proximity of students, we pull the bus list for that bus, we identify which students, and we actually look at tapes of the bus to see, you know, I might be in my seat, I might not really have contact with anyone on that bus. We take a look at the situation, identify the potential students that might have come in contact, and then we have to notify parents that there is a potential of that child being in close contact.
Does that include everybody on the bus with that child?
No.
Who does it include?
Close proximity.
What's that, Michelle? Six feet?
So that's within the six feet, that's more than 15 minutes.
Those buses aren't all that big.
Right. But we were going like every other seat, so we weren't as close as at the beginning of the year. We weren't as close as what we would normally be. We tried to group people, kids together with families, households, so that, you know, you weren't sitting with somebody down the street, the people sitting in the same seat with relatives.
If the child isn't sick or doesn't test positive or anything, they go into what's called isolation, is that correct?
Quarantine.
Quarantine.
Well, you have both. You have isolation and quarantine. And that was my question, because, you know, like I said, people are saying, what is the difference between isolation and quarantine?
We've used the term quarantine. Those students then are asked not to attend...
So isolation, how that word is different, is isolation is if you were sick and your husband is not sick, living in the same house, you should isolate separately in your home.
But we can't control that. We don't control the...
Right, but you're asking me what isolation is. That is, if you click on the term, if you had this document pulled up on the computer in front of you, and you pull it up, isolate if you are sick. Separate yourself from others if you have COVID-19. Isolation is used to separate people infected with COVID-19 from those who are not infected. If you go back and you click on in that same document, because if you pull this up online, there are links that will take you and explain these items to you from the CDC site. Quarantine is staying home if you might have been exposed. So isolation is if you are sick.
We don't isolate anybody, right? The school does not isolate anybody, is that correct?
We're telling you to stay home if you're sick, so yes, in essence, we are.
We don't isolate people in the school environment.
No, we're not like taking you out and putting you in another room or...
So the only person who's quarantined is the sick person?
No. Isolation is the person who is sick, if we're looking at their true definitions of what they are saying. Quarantining is if you have been exposed. So anybody that we say has been, not me, but if DOH says these are the people you need to quarantine, those are people that have been exposed, and we're asking them not to come back to school during the quarantine.
Dr. Pike, please keep in mind that when we get an identified case, we have to, our school nurses phone us into the Department of Health, and then they give us the direction that we have to follow. And I have Dr. Clara here, and he can add credence in anything that we're saying.
Before you speak, I have this question. So if Johnny with a COVID is sitting in a classroom with 20 kids?
Yes.
We're going to quarantine the 20 kids?
No.
No, not all.
We're not...
Maybe within close proximity of six feet for greater than 15 minutes.
It's a classroom, and the kid moves around and...
Can you guys hear me okay?
That mic is in line.
My apologies.
It hasn't been on all night.
I think it might just be low. I'm not sure, it might just be low. I kind of hear something. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm loud anyway.
Excuse me, Mr. Kiefer, you are out of order. We're listening to Dr. Clara. You have your five minutes. We all heard you.
I heard you. Heard you.
So, good question, how do we figure this out? We're not educated enough, so, or nursing, and, first of all, I've done this a couple of times, we get out of the room, we have a room separated, and kind of spaced out, so that, this is what I'm saying, of course, yeah, when we look at that child seating area, we would know that they were within six feet or more than 15 minutes, anybody would be around them for most of the day. So those specific students might be asked to stay home, and that'd be tested to make sure that they don't have it, because they would be close enough. Somebody sitting in front, if I'm sitting back and you're sitting in the front, it probably wasn't in long enough exposure time for you to be engaged. So we really want to look at those things, we try to be as accurate as we can, but it's inaccurate, sometimes we talk about things you can't see or hear. Well, that was our method of doing it, we checked in the DOH and said, okay, here we go, and then somebody asked us to measure, we looked at classroom seating charts, we looked at bus seating charts, I can tell you, my bus games are watched, to see if anybody was sitting next to somebody, and often, even though we have a space now, we leave the seat, we're sitting there, friend, and now, that's why, we consider it a diagnosis, I got one...
So Dan, you pick out certain children, and you call their families and say, keep these kids...
Yeah, we are suspicious, if you might have exposed because of the duration of time that you hear that person, we know for sure has been diagnosed with COVID.
So I think there was one exception to that, Dr. Pike, where there was an entire, we might have had two or three classrooms through the year that had multiple positive cases, and those classrooms were totally quarantined.
At the primary, at the elementary school level, you're not really moving from room to room, or one rooms to the container for them. It's a little different than in a high school, you're changing rooms and walking in a hallway. You would be in exposure with more people in a secondary, but in primary or elementary, which is where I was, so it was a little bit easier for me than I might be in contact trace at a high school, where you might be in one room sitting next to four or five people, and then four or five different people in that period, and so on. It got a little bit more complicated for those guys. But that was really the model we used, try to limit, perhaps saying, say, oh, because we may be in that area, the people we felt were confidently were close, we want to make sure we weren't exposed, and keep it more open. It's not an attack science.
I was going to say, how's this working for you?
Well, it took a lot of my time, but I can tell you, it was a bit serious, and between the nurses and principal and classroom teachers, we spent a lot of time trying to make sure it didn't happen, but even under the best of circumstances, we were always sure we made it all perfectly right, we took extra precaution, and we looked at wider spaces, but that doesn't mean that people won't get it.
Okay, Dan, so it said it started with a parent calling in, okay? So if a kid has COVID and comes to school and the parent doesn't call in, what do you do?
Sometimes we got lucky, and DOH contacted us, but sometimes that was after the child was back to school already. We had that case at least one time. So DOH in the beginning, I think, was a little bit better about contacting us, but that only works well if, when DOH reaches out to that family, the family answers their phone. Otherwise, we don't get that information from a doctor's office or anything, DOH has to contact us.
It's not specific to COVID. We have to run two or three days at bus stations, or whether kids were absent at the same time, and then they have to be contacted. It's not a simple thing to do.
And Dan, I understand good intentions, don't get me wrong, I do, but traditionally, we have isolated or quarantined the sick people and left the well people alone, but you're not doing that here. You're, and how, okay, so the kid has COVID, and they're three or four, they had two or three siblings in the school. Well, what do you do with them?
They're quarantined.
I had that happen with my own children.
Yeah, so who else gets quarantined from the siblings? You see, this is exponential.
So, Dr. Pike, if you are, okay, so say Johnny has COVID, and Johnny has three siblings. Three siblings are not sick, not showing any signs of sickness, they are asked to stay home and quarantine. You don't have to quarantine anybody from their classrooms or their bus routes because they were not sick. So you're only, we're asking the people with direct exposure to quarantine. You do not have to quarantine if you were not exposed.
Explain direct exposure, Michelle. I want to...
That's, we just did.
Come on, tell me again. Direct exposure means?
Direct exposure means within six feet of somebody for greater than 15 minutes total throughout a day. We're not saying that you have to sit directly beside them for 15 minutes, but if throughout that day, you've been directly exposed to somebody whose parents called and notified us that they are positive, that is direct exposure.
Okay, so if these kids, say five kids on a bus are told to stay home because the sixth kid was on the bus, how is their educational program provided to them?
That was, I mean, this is stuff that happened all year, Dr. Pike, like I feel like this is a moot point at this point, but they were, they had computers.
Yeah, we had construction, and shit, and the way we had the computer, the hybrid pillows. Yeah, that was a good thing with the teacher, I know, but we felt like that was still a big problem. Yeah, kids who might not belong to any time, I get that, I share this, my daughter never had it with a bus, was 14 to 12, I was 14, and then was 14 to 12 years because she could have gotten on the last day that I was still considered sick. So if you imagine how long, almost four weeks that she...
This is all wrong. This is all wrong.
But that was what it was, and her teachers were able to set things, to work on, communicate with them, sometimes it was black hole, bad time, it was early, it was in August, and we'd get it in September, sometimes it was black hole, sometimes it was bad. But we made the best combinations, we couldn't make sure the kids were connected with teachers. But again, if we're being honest, it's always better than with the teacher. And sometimes that wasn't possible because we were trying to make sure we weren't closing the entire grade or the entire school. We couldn't make sure that we knew that people thought like that, well, we'll be protecting them, protecting them.
Okay, so this remains the plan for next year?
For now, if it's changed, then we'll have to revisit, but that's more relevant.
Well, I had another question, and if you read these documents...
Can I ask a question? As far as that whole quarantining, like there's now an exception. So if there's a child who is vaccinated...
But then it did not exist long.
And can we explain that, like, you know, as a scenario, just so everybody, you know, our public is aware, like if you're vaccinated, then you don't have to quarantine.
So I'm a doctor, and I'm a doctor, I don't know what you want.
So that is what they're saying now, that's the guidance, is if you have a child, obviously 12 or older, that has been vaccinated, then they would not need to quarantine according to the guidelines, so...
Now, can I ask another question with that, as far as like legal matter? I don't know if it is... I don't know, I guess maybe just in my mind that kind of plays into a little bit of like discrimination?
What you're saying.
Like, you're vaccinated, so we're pretty sure you're healthy, but you're not vaccinated, so we don't think you're healthy. And I'm giving that scenario because I think that's how people can think of it, you know? How, like, how do we, as a school board, say that? Like, you know what I mean? I don't know. Excuse me, Mr. Kiefer.
I certainly understand that question. Health decisions, you know, the decision to get vaccinated or not get vaccinated is not necessarily one of the protected categories that is written into nondiscrimination law in either the state or the federal law that the district has to follow. But you still have an obligation under school code to provide an equitable educational program to all students, and so you're balancing that against the requirement to fulfill PDE's expectations of you to keep school, community members safe. So it's a balancing. It would be wonderful to have a clear-cut answer on even just how to navigate that question of, how can we know for sure who's vaccinated and who's not? That's something that we unfortunately haven't been given clear guidance yet from PDE on, but I think, as your administrators have mentioned, we're hopeful that we will have that before next school year starts, have a little bit more guidance on how to navigate that scenario.
Dr. Clara, before you go...
I do hope so, because...
It says in this plan repeatedly that at any point, we can just change everything. We can just change everything. So there are these COVID gods on high handing down this garbage, as far as I'm concerned. Are you saying that whatever they say, we're going to do, no matter what? Is that what it's going to be?
I'm not saying anything. I'm the first group responsible for the plan, and we have to talk about it, but...
Excuse me.
Dr. Clara.
Dr. Clara.
Dr. Clara, please.
So, when they give us some kind of reaction, they say, for example, that we need to look at our great infection plan, or positivity rates, we will have to respond to it, and particularly, we'd like to just be receiving that money, that is part of the department. So if you are leading this court, you're saying, in fact, we have seen this grant of writing is in conjunction, trying to actually say great matter, and plus, we use things like that, and that's what we're leading to. If you don't do a plan, then they don't have to accept your request.
And it boils down to that, Dan. It boils down to money. And you know how I feel. In my life, it boils down to education and doing the right thing for our kids. I watched 15 months go by where this was chaotic, to say the least, and we're going to see the results of what happened in a couple of weeks here, a few weeks here. But my concern is, are we going to do this again? No, are we going to have another year?
Listen, all of that is going to be an issue, because I'm projected stocks, all that, some kind of shooting up, now I vote for that.
Are there any other questions?
Dan, there are schools that never miss a day.
Are there any other questions?
Never miss a day.
You have a motion and a second.
Roll call.
Thank you, Dr. Clara.
Dr. Pike?
Thank you.
Dr. Pike?
Did you call my name?
Yes.
It's a no.
For the plan.
No? Excuse me. Excuse me.
Thank you, God.
I needed, I need a motion for recess.
Recess.
I need a motion for recess.
A motion.
I need a second.
Second.
No.
Motion fails. Four, uh, yes, three, no, and two absent.
Well, so, somebody can make a motion to reconsider. And then, once that motion to reconsider is made, um...
I can't hear you on this side.
Somebody can... I'm sorry.
We need to make a...
A motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider.
Needs to be made at this point, and then discussion can ensue.
Then discuss?
Correct.
Okay.
And the motion to reconsider has to be made by somebody who voted yes.
I'll make the motion to reconsider.
Yes, okay.
Correct.
So we have... Do we need a second?
You do need a second.
I need a second. Oh, it's not a walk-on, Mr. Kiefer.
Okay, I'll second.
A discussion.
Okay, so I'll say now what I was gonna say. Um, yeah, I know, I get it, this isn't perfect. Um, the plan for the health and safety plan for last year wasn't perfect. Um, I think, and I know I was a critic, um, of the board when it all happened. Um, I was a big critic, and in partial, I'm still a critic, but in the same sense, at least, what I can see is that this is making progress. And here, it states, um, that our children, or I'm sorry, that our parents will basically have the choice, um, or families will have the choice of masking. So, I'm sorry, that's a step forward. Whether it's not the best step or not, it's still a step forward, and that's what I know I'm pushing for, because last year sucked. Am I allowed to say that? Sorry. But it did, I mean, here, we had, we had three months of, of our children being at home, not in a classroom, three solid months. I know my kids were done with it.
So, and here is what I will say. When I got on the board in October, and I was, the first decision I had to make was whether to go virtual or not, and that was one of the most difficult decisions I ever made. I had decided that there are other people who get paid way more than me to know what is the best thing to do. And so, because at this point, mask mandates have been lifted, I feel like I am under the obligation to follow what is being presented to me by people who, in theory, know way more than I do. So although I personally don't feel great, quite honestly, about saying no to masks, especially in K through five, there are people who are in the no, in better position than me, who have said that, at this point, that is a thing that we can consider at this point. So, like I said, my, I made my decision long ago that I need to rely on experts that know more than I do. And so that is how I have, you know, kind of decided to be okay with it. Personally, I'd prefer my child still wearing a mask, and that will be up to me to make that decision. And that is, you know, where we're at at the moment. So that's where I, how I have come to be okay with the plan as it's been presented.
Is there any other discussion or questions?
I'd like to just make a, make a quick statement on the masking. One of the things that I've been advising our clients to consider is to continue monitoring over the summer months, um, CDC's recommendations and PDE's recommendations and statements on masking. Um, 'cause I think what you're, what you're sort of left with here is, is somewhat indefinite. It's not a definitive statement, and, and that can lead to discomfort, no matter which side of the aisle you fall on. Um, you know, still, you do have to meet the July 30th requirement to get your funding, and that's the difficult position that you're put in. But I think that it behooves school districts to understand that you can make another revision to this plan before the masks come back in August, um, as things unfurl over the summer.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Who are we voting?
We're voting again to approve the safety plan. Okay. Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
No. Same one.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Okay, is this the same one? So it's a no? No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
So we are going to need to have a meeting, um, next Thursday.
That's great. So we gotta, uh, new plan.
You're gonna have to come back and vote on this one with the members that are here. There's really, in this plan, it allows for masking at parent's discretion.
Right.
That's what this allows for.
That's a big deal.
That's as good as any plan is going to get.
Jim, I don't think it's a problem if it's billed for what it is. It's meeting some requirements to get some money, but it's not really a plan for our students, our parents, our community. It's something else. Uh, it's, it's a document that has a title of one thing, but the, the body component is not that. This is not a plan for the district. This is a plan that you're submitting to get money. And if, I think if that's what you bill it as, that's okay, but that's not how it's being built, in my mind, just in my mind.
That's what this is. That, that, that's what this in essence is. I will tell you all why I'm voting no. I mean, I'm voting no because I believe that we should still be masking K through five. I believe we should still be masking because that's the recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics. That's why I'm a no. So in my mind, this plan, being submitted to the state, is stating that we are no longer going to mask. That's what this plan states. So, um...
Michelle, I have had people tell me if their child has to wear a mask, they're not gonna send their kid back to school.
Right, I understand that.
These kids blow their nose in it, they trade masks, they spit on them, they wipe the floor with them.
And that's what this plan says.
They're getting sicker from this. They're not gonna love this.
This plan says that if you don't want your child to mask, they do not have to. That's what this plan says. So, um, Mrs. Tarson, will there be enough time to re-advertise this meeting for next Thursday?
Yes.
Will you be able to?
Yes, I'll do that tomorrow.
Michelle, who wrote the plan?
Um, it was a group of parents.
Who?
Teachers. Um, I don't have everybody's name right here in front of me, um...
Did they meet in person, or was this a Zoom meeting?
We met on Zoom.
What?
We met through Zoom. Zoom.
Zoom, it was Zoom.
It was Zoom meeting.
So you contacted some people, and they got on Zoom and produced this?
Yes. I mean, and basically, this was produced for us. You needed to fill in the blanks of how you were going to do these things.
That's exactly right, Michelle.
So basically, what we are now saying, in regards to what people wanted, was their children will not have to mask to attend school again in the fall. That's, that's what people wanted.
Michelle, Yoc and Hemphill have both said no masks.
Well, that's the same thing.
That's the same thing. I'm voting right now.
That's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
We need another one, though. We need another one.
Another what?
Another what?
Every, every school district has had to submit this to the state.
Dr. Pike, this plan is exactly what Hemphill has done. This is exactly what Yoc has done. We have, we have said that they will not have to mask unless that's what they want to do for their children, then they can mask.
Does that apply to sports and everything, Michelle?
It will apply to everything, yes.
Everything?
Yes.
Okay, is there gonna be a more detailed explanation available to the public, then? I guess that's...
I mean, eventually, I think that this isn't, um, completely a done deal. I think we're still waiting for some guidance to come out, um, from PDE, DOH. Um, I think they have most recently stated that they are going to wait for CDC to come out and say what their guidelines are. But as of right now, this that we have in place, I think Dr. Clara could agree, is the same thing that all these districts that are saying no mask. This is their plan.
Is there a Plan B for the public? I guess, I guess that's what I'm asking for.
There will be more guidance than just this piece of paper.
Is there a Plan B?
So, so, so as of this plan, just some of these, the things that are in this plan is still the cleaning as we were doing it. We will be attending school five days a week, we will be deep cleaning every day. So there won't be, uh, you know, some kids are gonna go to school on certain days. Everybody is gonna come to school five days a week in this plan.
Is it gonna say in-person instruction, Michelle? Is it gonna have words like that? In-person instruction?
For five days a week, in-person instruction unless we would have, you know, an exorbitant amount of cases and need to close. Um, but yes, it'll be five days a week instruction.
These are the questions I'm getting, Michelle. These are the questions.
So yes, it will be five days a week of instruction, masking if the parents would like to mask their children. Um, still social distancing to the greatest extent possible, which is what it was whenever we left in the fall. Basically, all of the other things, other than masking, um...
Are all the same.
Is, is as it was in the fall, and that's what we're going back to.
You mean in the spring?
Students will be allowed to use their lockers. Um, that, they weren't allowed to use lockers last year. They will be allowed to use their lockers.
That's what I wanna hear, Jim. That's what I wanna hear.
This is about as close as we could get to being normal again, is...
Yes.
What happens if we don't follow CDC? But I mean, beyond, beyond the funding, though? Like, as far as, um... I don't know, I guess maybe insurance-wise, but even further like that? Can we be fined?
No. The CDC has made recommendation, they've made recommendations. They're not mandated.
They're not mandated?
That's correct.
Now, what about, like, PDE, like...
You had to follow the universal masking order. That was the mandate around masking, which was lifted and, and is currently lifted, which makes it, you know, an option to make masks optional at this point.
Okay.
So we're gonna meet next Thursday, are you sure? Do we still have the Zoom, do we still have the Zoom option?
Nope.
I would like to change my vote.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to entertain discussion again on this, and I need it from somebody who's voted yes.
Well, I mean, I'm to hear in different things, and I, I'm gonna take it.
I think we should have had more discussion.
Yeah.
Prior to, and...
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I need a second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Oh, boy.
Don't you dare, don't you dare!
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Peggy, is this for more discussion? Is that...
This is it. To vote on the plan.
To redo it again?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're voting on the actual plan.
So we're voting on the plan.
We're voting on the plan.
You're a yes.
This plan?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was, we were voting to make a new plan. Oh, still no, then? I'm still no, yeah, I'm still no.
I too.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
I'm glad you're clear about what's going on, too, because I'm...
Well, we got five that time.
Thank you.
Yes, two no, two absent.
So we're allowed to remove the masks now?
That's the plan for July or August.
Oh, yeah.
That's what the news told you.
More importantly, you don't have a meeting next Thursday.
Correct.
Amen. That's not why I changed my vote, I swear.
I think that there needed to be a little more discussion so you understood what was in the plan as far as masking. And this is the same basic plan that every other district does.
Dr. Clara did due diligence and was looking at other plans for other districts, so this, this does concur, and, and I have spoken to other superintendents, this is the plan that they're tentatively looking at, at following, yes.
I didn't realize, but, you know, that's why I changed my mind.
So, um, we're moving into personnel matters, and I would like to entertain a motion to walk on the following items.
There are five walk-on items, I'm going to read through them. The first is appointment of Dan Boring as athletic director at an annual supplemental stipend of $10,169. He will remain a full-time EA member at the teacher's salary specified under the collective bargaining agreement with a reduced schedule. Number two, Josh Payjack as equipment manager, appointing him at the stipend amount of $2,457. Um, the third item is for the board to appoint Laurel Bell as personal care assistant, PCA, at an annual salary of $16,187.50. Number four is appointment of 14 individuals as summer launchpad staff, and I will name them. Each will be paid at a rate of $35 per hour through the ESSER funding. Michelle Pergor, Jason Monroe, Megan Bergschop, Sharon Godisky, Leanne Richter, Sherry Zimmerman, Sarah Whitaker, Abby Cesario, Tammy Tabaj, uh, Lavina Hofer, Ken Lipton, Zach Ripple, Kathy Palagus, and Sandy Geiger. Um, item number five for the walk-on is appointment of Haley Rait as a sub-van aide at a daily rate of $50.
Do I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You need a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, number one, volunteer football coaches?
Board is asked to consider the approval of Dave Brown as high school volunteer football coach, Jordan Polakowski as middle school volunteer football coach. All clearances and letters are in file with Mrs. Tarzan.
You need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You need a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Michelle, I have a question. I thought we only had to vote, a voice vote, if there was money involved. But for volunteers, is there any money involved?
There's no money involved, but they're working with our students. I would think we would want to do a, a voice vote for that.
I'm just talking about the procedure, because I was always told that if there's no money involved, it's just a voice vote, just a, a general, instead of a roll call.
You can voice vote these items. Uh, uh, there's, it's really a matter of preference.
It's a matter of what?
Uh, preference. If it's a volunteer, I mean, it does need to be board-approved, um, but it can be accomplished via a voice vote.
Do what you want.
Roll call. Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
Hiring of new teachers?
Board is asked to hire the following teachers: Sarah Crawl, K-25 computer teacher; Rebecca Huff, middle school computer teacher; Amy Hickson, school nurse; Diana Banco, K-1 autistic support, contingent upon receiving PA certification, she can be emergency certified; Jennifer Stefanino, K-1 learning support; Laura Prangeman, middle school learning support at the salary and step dependent upon SEA contract.
You need a motion?
A motion.
You need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Are they, um, like, see, middle school learning support, so they are, can you explain that title to me? I mean, they're, I guess not the actual title, but like this, so their, their teachers are not, like, just aides?
No, they're, they're teachers.
Their actual teacher, okay, thank you. That's...
They're supporting those students that are, need assistance at middle school.
With, like, IEPs and that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
Public comments on the walk-on items.
Know how we can reverse it.
Excuse me? We're not commenting after? We haven't talked about these things. We voted on some other items.
I, I know what's going on, on that. The reason, you think it's funny, Nicole? Tell me what's funny. I mean, I'm, I got the time.
Okay, come on.
I'm asked, I'm sorry.
Address the board, please.
Whenever you have walk-on items like this, it would be nice at the beginning if the chair would say, you know, we had executive session, and we just real briefly to say we do have these walk-on items coming and involved, in this instance, you could say some personnel, some teachers, and things like that. So people who are here that don't, don't turn your head on this, 'cause I'm gonna nail you on what, how I explain this. On teachers like, or, uh, things like this, whenever, uh, people are here, they don't know something like has come up, they'll get up and walk out. Here's how that happened with here. When we decided, for those new members at the table, when we decided to close the schools, it was a walk-on, uh, item at the end of the agenda, after public comment. This is how we operate here, this is the sticks. And I saw it in the Borough Council where, uh, Mr. Williams had a walk-on item from the crowd and into the, uh...
Excuse me, I think we need to be discussing these particular walk-on items.
I'm talking about walk-on items, aren't I?
Discuss these items, not the process. We're discussing the items.
It is quite common, in my experience, in public meetings, both in Scottsdale and numerous other public meetings around here, to see walk-on items abused, and this is what it can happen, and this is how it can be averted. And it would just be a courtesy. It's not a legal thing, you don't have to do it, but it would be a nice courtesy, because I've seen some really disastrous decisions and momentous decisions made after half the people left the room because of these things. It's just a nice little way to operate at a higher level.
Okay, I need a motion. I'm sorry, so, um...
Motion for number one.
Motion for number one?
We'll take them individually, I would recommend. So number one was appointment of the athletic director, Dan Boring, at a salary of $10,169, with a reduced schedule while he maintains full EA salary and membership.
I'll make the motion.
You need a second?
Okay.
Discussion?
This cuts a half-day teacher, and I am opposed to cutting any teacher, any teachers.
That's a half-day teacher?
We're cutting a half-time teacher. He's gonna get paid a full salary to teach a half a day. I am not, I think, we have educational needs here across the board, and I think all teachers should teach all day. Nothing is more important to me than that.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
No.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries six yes, one no, two absent.
I need a motion for item number two. And that was Mr. Payjack being appointed as the equipment manager at a stipend of $2,457. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You need a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
What's this motion, Jim?
Roll call.
Dr. Pike?
And any other ones?
Dr. Pike, equipment manager?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heather Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
Need a motion for item number three.
Ms. Laurel Bell appointed as a PCA at a salary of $16,187.50.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
Need a motion for item number four.
Um, this is the appointment of summer launchpad staff, 14 individuals as red, at a rate of $35 an hour.
I'll make the motion.
You need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
Need a motion for item number five.
Item five is appointment of Haley Rait as a substitute van aide at a $50 per DM rate.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, two absent.
Does any other board members have anything?
I have a request, Michelle. I have learned that the results of our achievement test data will be available in August, and I am requesting that we receive publicly the results of that achievement data. I'm not interested in individual scores, but I think we need to look at our strengths and our weaknesses, and as we approach the new school year, I think we, we need to look at that data as part of the plan to see where we need to, to focus our strengths to do remediation and things like that. And I think this is one important piece of data that the public needs to know so that we know where to start in terms of a, a solid approach to educating our children this year, and I am requesting that that be done.
Dr. Pike, that is already in the plans being done.
Perfect, thank you. I didn't know that.
Citizens' comments?
Yes, it was last time? Who cares? Um, so if, if the Delta virus comes in, and all this talk tonight of double voting, and all is out the door, the COH, and the CDC hand down the things, and that's what you're gonna do, so that's what you're gonna do.